To give you a presentation on this item, which was really initiated by our city council housing subcommittee. As you know, the council has various subcommittees that they are part of, and the housing subcommittee asked staff to look into this further and bring something forward for the city council to consider. And Martin has some additional information that he can share with you in terms of the timing and dates, but the next step after tonight will really be to have a study session with the city council so they can take a look at this further. And certainly, any comments that you have, we'd be happy to take forward as part of the packet that goes to city council and share your comments with the council. So with that, I will turn it over to Martin, who will give you a presentation, and I'll bring that up in just a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, commissioners. So this constant conversation came, as Lisa mentioned, in March earlier this year when staff met with the city council housing subcommittee to discuss housing displacement in general and also policies and strategies to be able to reduce housing displacement and how we can relieve some of the stress on the housing market. So I start with this slide here, which is an image of the Bay Area, and this comes from a study by -- we'll be passing out -- sorry, just one second.
I apologize. I have to interrupt for just a second. We have copies of this, so you can take notes as --
Thanks. Thank you.
So on slide two here, we start with a map of the Bay Area as a whole, and, excuse me, UC Berkeley has been tracking about 40 variables or so that are looking at the idea of urban displacement in the Bay Area, so this is part of their urban displacement project. And what they do here is they've looked at census tracts around the Bay Area from 1990 to 2010 to track changes and see how different tracts have been experiencing forms of gentrification or exclusion. So there's two different shades here. There are the blue shades and the red shades. And the blue shades are lower-income tracts, traditionally lower-income tracts, and the red are moderate and high-income tracts. So in looking at -- putting our attention on the blue ones, you can see that the darker blue is this level of advanced gentrification, which is characterized by -- some of the variables are low-income house -- number of low-income households, median home price, and asking rents. So tracking over these 30 years how much they've changed, the ones in the darkest colors are the ones that are experiencing this most -- this change most strongly. And looking at this a little bit closer to home in San Carlos, we see that there are about -- there are two census tracts, the ones that comprise downtown San Carlos, that are currently experiencing this quote-unquote "advanced gentrification" level. And this is important because it's where the cities predominantly have -- it's where most of the multifamily rental units are in the city. And when we look a little bit closer to figure out what exactly has been happening, we can look at some of the condominium home sale transactions to look at some of these historical real estate changes. And we start seeing that around the year 2000, something interesting starts happening where the price per square foot of condominiums starts to get to the $300 mark and starts increasing rapidly and goes through the housing boom times, and there's the dip after the crash, and then just continues upward. And so we have some rising and dropping, but what's ultimately really drastic here is the level at what we've arrived to over the last three years where levels are exceeding $700 per square foot. And this is really exemplary of what's happening in the market and why so many of the renters in the area are being displaced. So the council really wanted to know what policies can be adopted to help address this issue of displacement. And we looked at what some of the other Bay Area municipalities have been doing and what kind of tools they've adopted to protect the residents. And there are several things that San Carlos is currently doing to try and mitigate these impacts. The city currently has condominium conversion regulations that limit the number of condo conversions per year. We currently encourage transit-oriented development. We have incentivized land use controls that offer density bonuses. And we have a below-market rate program that mitigates the impacts of market-rate residential development. But there are other tools that Bay Area jurisdictions are using to try and protect their residents, and these include things like community benefit agreements, which provide certain goods to neighborhoods as a part of the development process. There's rent stabilization, which limits the amount of rent that can be increased for certain types of units. There are just-cause eviction clauses that limits various evictions, and there's the commercial linkage fee program, which is what we're talking about today. So the question comes up, the city already has a development fee program for residential development, so why do we need one for commercial development? If you look at the historical development that has occurred in the city since 2000, both in San Mateo County and the city, we can see that it's predominantly commercial development. Eighty-four percent of all new development was commercial in San Mateo County, and this rate for San Carlos was 92 percent. And this is very important because all of these projects currently are not paying into any fee program that tries to mitigate the impacts of its development. And any new commercial space, of course, demands new employees, new labor, and those employees earn certain wages. So if we look at this slide, it illustrates what some of the average salaries are for several sectors that service these new commercial developments. So we can see that telecommunications installers, convention event planners, hotel, motel and resort desk clerks, restaurant cooks, and food prep workers all make significantly less per year than is required. The golden line here, which demonstrates what the salary that is required to afford a one-bedroom unit in the county is. We can see that there's a big earnings gap between what people are earning and what is necessary to live in one of our communities. So in looking at the fee, we wanted to know what other peninsula cities have adopted a fee program. And we looked to the city of Palo Alto, which was one of the earliest adopter of the commercial linkage fee. And they had their ordinance in 1984, and their ordinance reads, "The goal and purpose of this chapter is to lessen the shortage of low-income and moderate-income housing in Palo Alto by requiring developers of large commercial and industrial projects, as a condition of using land for the privilege of development, to contribute to programs that increase the city's low-income and moderate-income housing stock." And so over the 24 years of their program, they've been able to construct 377 new affordable units for an average of about 15 units per year. And this is kind of a unique situation. If we look to other peer cities in the peninsula, and we look at this on slide 12, on the far-right column, we can see there's a date-adopted column that shows when different cities adopted their ordinances. And as you can see there, they're all very recent, with the exception of Palo Alto. And so each jurisdiction structures its programs slightly different. They all charge different fee levels for different land uses. Palo Alto charges a fee, the same fee, for all types of land uses, hotel, retail, restaurant, office, a medical office, and they all charge a one-uniform fee. Other cities charge different fee levels for different types, and these are all based -- they're all grounded in a NEXUS study. And the NEXUS studies provide a base fee recommended level that can be adjusted based on what the community sees fit for its own ordinance. And these NEXUS studies do take into account total development costs and acceptable financial returns to developers, and they really try to ensure that fee levels do not inhibit development, but rather add virtually to pay the fair share and to mitigate the amount of need that's created for affordable housing.
I'm sorry to pause, and forgive me if this is the least intelligent question ever, but are we talking money per square foot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I should mention that. These are on a per-square-foot basis of net new development. And so for the city of San Carlos, the row that is circled in blue there illustrates what the proposed fee levels are in the city of San Carlos as a result of the NEXUS study. The NEXUS study concluded that the most feasible amount for a hotel use would be $15 per square foot, and then $5 for retail, and $20 per square foot for office, R&amp;D, and medical office space. Staff opted to deviate from the recommended hotel fee by the consultants who'd crafted the NEXUS study and reduce it by $5 to arrive at a $10 hotel per-square-foot fee. And this was -- the reasoning was to be in line with some of our neighbor cities to remain competitive in the marketplace. This was corroborated by the housing subcommittee. So we wonder what the projected benefits of a new commercial linkage fee program would bring to the city. And then trying to quantify what this could potentially do, it's a bit difficult because it's on a per-project basis, so it would be hard to know exactly what the fee amount would be raised. But if we look at what the 2030 general plan estimates commercial growth to be out to 2030, it's about 3.4 million square feet, of which some has already been developed since the 2008 period. So if we exclude square feet utilized by both the Landmark Hotel and the Meridian 25 Development, we have some remaining square footage, and then if we apply this fee, the per-square-foot fee, we can have a very rough estimate of what maximum potential revenues might be. And so it's estimated that it could be around $23.7 million worth of revenue for the production of affordable housing. And this essentially translates into using these funds, we'd be able to have San Carlos support the construction of about 75 affordable units from these revenues. And as I mentioned earlier, programs are crafted differently for each jurisdiction based on local needs, and there are some options that need to be considered when crafting a new program. So four options that we will be presenting to city council for consideration on next Monday will be, one, should there be a fee exemption for particular commercial uses such as nonprofit space, hospitals, or uses that may fall within a category that would otherwise be charged but would necessarily not need to pay the fee for a certain reason. So exemptions could be placed for anything that council would like to see. Two, should there be fee exemptions or reductions for buildings of less than a certain size? So some municipalities opt to exempt certain projects of a certain size, and some do not offer that reduction. So Menlo Park, for example, only applies this fee to projects that are 10,000 square feet or more. The county of San Mateo exempts projects that are 3,500 square feet or less. Redwood City exempts projects that are 5,000 square feet or less. So in conversations we've been having here in San Carlos, staff and city council housing subcommittee have recommended the 5,000 square feet or less to be a starting point. And we've also taken this presentation to the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and they've actually recommended that level be increased up to 10,000 square feet or less to be considered. Third option to consider is whether there should be a fee reduction for projects that employ prevailing wage. Some municipalities have opted to provide that. Redwood City provides it, and 25 percent fee reduction is typically what cities that provide it choose to offer a reduction at. And so it is something that staff would -- staff and the city council housing subcommittee would like to see considered. The Economic Development Advisory Committee has recommended that that not be part of the consideration. And then lastly, another option that can be considered is whether the developer should be given an option to simply build the units either onsite or offsite somewhere else and/or dedicate land instead of paying the linkage fee. And so these are all options that can be considered to be crafted in our own ordinance if, after the study session that we'll be having, the city chooses to move forward with presenting an ordinance for adoption. And so just to give you an idea of next steps, we're currently here at the first bullet. We're presenting a planning commission, and then we'll be going to the full city council on October 10th to have this study session. And if we continue, we will have the first reading of the linkage fee ordinance on October 24th. And if it continues after that, there will also be the second reading, which will be slated for adoption and resolution of any particularities that -- and options that the city council would like to add to the ordinance. And so with that, if you have any questions, I know we went over a lot of material at once, so if we -- so with your handout, if we want to go over anything in particular, we can go into more detail on any questions you may have.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first thing that pops into my mind is, why on earth this took so long? Given that Palo Alto's had a fee since 1984, I'm wondering if you can tell me more about why other municipalities in the mid-peninsula or the Bay Area haven't looked at doing this earlier than apparently two years ago.
Yeah, so I pulled up this slide 12 here, which shows the date of adoption. You know, as with any fee program, there's always fear that the imposition of any fee will essentially halt development, or that your competitor cities are, you know, if you have, you know, a significant fee, $20 a square foot to build an office park, and you can build it in San Carlos or in Belmont, and they don't have the fee. I think that the fear always comes with fee programs, that it might stop development. But as we've experienced with the real estate market, with everything that's going on, development and displacement are very, very important topics to all, you know, all cities in the Bay Area. And I think that this -- the requirement and the need, I should say, to have all forms of development mitigate at least their fair share of new development for affordable housing is really an important topic now.
Did staff notice, did Palo Alto lose a lot of potential development opportunity because of their fee?
It seems that development has not halted in Palo Alto, yeah. And as a matter of fact, I should point, this, again, slide 12 here, the top group of -- grouping of cities are the adopted fees, so there's our current levels, and there are also cities that are considering new, but also updates. So the city of Palo Alto is currently revisiting its fee program, and they are looking at increasing their fees. And so they've actually opted to -- they're currently exploring at raising their office per-square-foot fee to $60, which would be seen as extremely cost prohibitive to a lot of development, but due to the desirability of communities here to develop, it's essentially not halting development.
EDAC had suggested a 10,000 or less square-foot threshold, whereas city council's committee and staff had recommended 5,000. Since we don't have EDAC's minutes here, can you tell us more about EDAC's rationale?
Sure. So EDAC was thinking of the greater east side and some of the larger industrial buildings that we have there, and there was cause for concern about some of the redevelopment that may happen on the greater east side with larger footprints of some of those older buildings. So there, that's really where the conversation regarding the size being too low was a cause for concern. When housing subcommittee and staff were considering the 5,000, there was a lot of conversation about Laurel Street and some of the retail establishments there, and making sure that owners of retail, commercial, real estate, that was for retail on that corridor would not be essentially experiencing some cost prohibitiveness of redeveloping their buildings.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So is the recommendation on the number four, that the developers be given an option to build housing units or dedicate land, is that a recommendation that's going with the city council?
I should elaborate on that. To city housing subcommittee, their opinion was that that should not be an option. So that's not -- it's all still open, but the housing subcommittee formal decision was to not offer that as a potential option.
Except their recommendation was not to offer that as?
That's correct.
What was the justification for that?
It was, there was, I think that there was some recalc -- there was a bit recalcitrant that, due to the fact that there may be some developers that would build mixed-use buildings, would want to build mixed-use buildings in places that were, that was not necessarily desirable. Of course, anyone who wanted to build would have to conform to whatever the zoning standards are in whatever neighborhood that their project is in, but I think there was some concern about that.
Or that they'd build housing right on top of their buildings, and their employees would literally never, ever be able to leave the complex.
Be another cause for concern.
When you talk about workforce housing, I mean, that's one of the things that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about is actually building workforce housing, and this would allow that. And I know there's probably, I don't know if that's favorable, everyone believes that that's a good idea, but it certainly is one solution to the problem, is just provide workforce housing. I'm inclined to, my personal opinion, this is something we should explore, but we're not the deciding body on this, so.
So one quick question. On the examples of the linkage fees for the different cities, and I know San Mateo County disapproved this as well, what city relative to San Carlos's size is the best example? Because Palo Alto's double the size, it's actually five times the size and size of the city, as well as double the population at least. So what would you say is probably the closest?
So we've --
Menlo Park?
Yeah, size-wise. And then we've really been looking at Redwood City because proximity. Belmont is currently also exploring, I think Belmont would be a good analog, but they're currently also in the middle of their process. We've been looking at Redwood City particularly because of the neighboring community aspect. We want to ensure that even if it's a $5 difference, it's, you know, different than if it was a $20 difference. And it's really, the potential to stop some sort of potential development might occur at the city limit line, where you can go to the neighboring municipality. So I think in terms of size, maybe Menlo Park is the best analog from this current set, and I suppose coming soon, maybe Foster City and Belmont in the future.
So I don't remember if you recovered this, but what was the logic behind the hotel?
So the consultants that produced the NEXUS study recommended a $15 hotel fee, and we opted to reduce it by $5 to be more aligned with the marketplace. So for example, here, the adjacency to Redwood City, their fee is currently at $5. So while we believe that the $15 fee is a good, is a substantiated and well-supported amount, and we could potentially charge it, we do, we wanted it to be a little bit closer to what the neighboring municipalities were charging to ensure that we weren't inhibiting a potential hotel project.
Nice. So why wouldn't you have it closer to five?
We could. So the NEXUS studies essentially give us a maximum linkage fee number, and then you just, based on whatever policy considerations.
You'd pick something that works from, basically.
Yeah. And so we believe 15 is the correct number, and so we could bring it all the way down at five, but we believed that, or staff recommended that at a beginning point, $10 would be, would still allow a potential hotel project to happen, and it'll be closer to the actual fair share mitigation of a hotel project for affordable housing while not stopping it from happening.
Well, staff knows better than I do, so. I'm just pointing it out. The San Mateo County, I don't really know of any -- Yeah, the San Mateo County, I don't really know of any county area that you would probably put a hotel, at least county jurisdiction. And I know that there's a number of hotels proposed, I believe, for Redwood City, or maybe recently approved, as well as I know that we've had some. My thinking is, obviously, we have hotel sales taxes, most cities do, so I would think in that particular class set, I would, I would say that we probably would want to be closer to what our neighbor Redwood City was doing. But obviously, there's a nexus for all this stuff, so that's just my comments, really. And this Nexus was, study was done real recently?
Yeah. It was done, it was part of the Grand Nexus study that was composed for all jurisdictions in San Mateo County, it's part of 21 elements, and it was specifically tailored to the city of San Carlos, and it was conducted within, well, July 2015, and it was updated July 2016 for purposes of this study.
That's pretty current.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments?
How do we get a copy of the Nexus study?
We can provide you with a copy.
That'd be great.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm, I'm glad it's been researched, I'm glad it's moving forward. Look forward to that adoption.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing. The procedure for public hearing is the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed by the staff's recommendation, and the applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speaker should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing minutes. So the first item on the agenda is 1030 Britton Avenue, APNs 046-162-060 and 046-162-070. Request for consideration of a conditional use permit application for outdoor vehicle storage. Do we have a presentation?
We do.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I'll present to you the request for consideration of conditional use permit approval for the operation of outdoor vehicle storage for Autobahn. The property at 1030 Britton Avenue is divided into two parcels. Parcel A measures 60,000 square feet in area, and Parcel B is 15,500 square feet in area. The two parcels have striped parking, with Parcel A having 177 spaces, and Parcel B has 64 spaces. The property at 1030 Britton Avenue is zone GCI, general, commercial, industrial. Per a section in the code, Section 18.06.020, outdoor storage requires review and approval of a conditional use permit by the planning commission. The applicant proposes to lease the property from the property owner, which is 1030 Britton LLC, to use the two parcels for parking up to 215 vehicles onsite. Four staff members would be responsible for transporting vehicles to and from the site. A car carrier would be used approximately four times per week. The proposed hours of operation are daily from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There's no intention to alter the current configuration of the property. The parking requirement for outdoor storage is one space per 5,000 square feet over 10,000 square feet in size, plus one parking space per 300 square feet of office. As there is no office onsite, there is no parking required for that use. For the outdoor storage component, 15 spaces are required. With the combined parcels, 241 spaces are available. There's an anticipated parking demand of 215 spaces per the business description, meaning there are 26 spaces left over to accommodate the required parking for the use onsite. Staff mailed a public hearing notice to all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the project site on September 22nd, 2016, and published the notice in a local newspaper on September 23rd, 2016. No public, public comment has been received by staff. At this time, I'm available for any questions you may have for staff, and the applicant's representative is also here.
Any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions.
Explain the ingress and egress as well? I mean, can you explain how they're coming in and how they're leaving?
So they'll be entering from and exiting to Britton Avenue. There's a gate, and they'll just enter and exit from there on Britton Avenue.
Is the gate in the middle of the two parcels? Or?
Yes.
Yeah?
So-
Oh, yeah, you could see it better. Thank you.
How, how are they making a left on a Britton? There's, these are solid lines. Did they change the DMV code? I don't know, how do you make a-
It's only a single solid, right, on Britton? Or am I wrong?
No, there's, there's solid on both sides.
Double solid?
Yeah.
I'm gonna-
And my concern is with a, with a hauler going across two lanes, and it's not even legal, from what I'm seeing. I'm looking at a, a Google Street View of July 2016, so unless it's changed in the last few months.
No, that's a, that's a single double, so you can, you can turn left on it.
You can turn, crossing two lanes?
You can, you can, oh, you mean coming straight out.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Got it, okay. I was thinking, coming, turning. No, I see your point.
And if you have a hauler here, you know what a hauler is, right? I mean, crossing two lines, traffic, one, it's not even, can't even do it, but-
And through the chair, the applicant is here, so we could ask the applicant what their plans are for routing the vehicles in and out of the site, and in addition, the car carrier as well. Would you like to come up and answer those questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer those questions.
We can stall.
It may to be your concern, I can try to contact-
Can we, can we, can you get the Google Maps?
Sure.
Of 10, 1030 Britton Avenue? You can act, if you want to go back to the podium over here, it's recording right now, so you're probably, it's okay.
And through the chair, and for, as the commissioners are aware, because this is a conditional use permit, if there's concerns about access into and out of the site, those are conditions that we can place on this requested conditional use permit.
Thank you. So it's a concern that they would have the hauler there, and then cross over another lane of traffic, and then over the yellow line, if that, the-
That and it's not allowed.
Right, because there's a, there's a solid yellow line in the center.
Yeah.
So that would be-
I'm not familiar if there's another way of exiting this, that's why I was asking, actually. And I don't believe there is. I think the back of the lot, if I remember correctly, is gated.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think it's up on the screen. So the carry, I mean, Britton's going, so you're saying that basically the car carrier's going to be-
Coming into the, coming into the parcel's not the issue, leaving, leaving, if Britton is the route, and they're headed back to the dealership, which is in Belmont.
They could go the other direction.
If they go the other direction, the problem is that, that's not the direction that we had in the staff report we had. Because that would be routing through Old County, I would imagine, Britton to Old County, because, or going El Camino, or, I mean, you're basically going completely around, which is probably not that logical.
But it's not the only way that people can do it, doesn't that-
Or is that to create other problems with circulation? I'm trying to understand the concern that they exit the way.
Circulation is one. Noticing is another one. Yeah, if it was noticed correctly, I mean, when you do a public notice, you kind of lay out what the, how it's supposed to look. So, my concern is that if they're going, if you're exiting the dealership and going down, I mean, a hauler, more, I mean, more importantly, a hauler, a hauler, that is a pretty large vehicle, going down Old County Road.
So the difficulty is with the, the use of a car carrier and exiting what would be the-
Jesse, could you show me what you're talking about here, as far as, where's, are you talking, like, if the car and hauler was here, and they're facing this way, we're not okay for going this way?
Well, I think what the intention was, was to make a left onto Britton Avenue.
Right, and go up to Old County?
Yes.
Okay.
No, to industrial.
Industrial, okay.
Industrial, the freeway, or what, industrial. So now-
Grading and dirt hall.
The question is, if it goes that direction, you're going to have to go Old County-
Right.
Or El Camino.
Yeah, which is a different route than published.
Correct.
But I think that's the only way they can do it legally. Right, is to go-
And through the chair, there's, the staff doesn't include a proposed route within the staff report, because, well, first of all, there wasn't one specified. In any particular requirements on any given street that are legally required to be adhered to, the applicant would be, you know, held to those. So maybe the question is, can they conduct their operations utilizing the roadway as it's, exists, is presently configured with the turning limitations that are, that are currently, could potentially be, impact the business operations?
Right, I mean, we weren't requesting a special permission to go a particular route between the dealership and the lot.
Well, I think the only way that we could say that they can go is if they were to go toward Old, Old County, because if they have, they're going to have to have their hauler on Britton, right?
The way you can't cross the double line and go the opposite way, that's, yeah.
So can we, can we condition that route?
So if I'm, if I'm hearing the commission correctly, placing a condition to require that exiting the site requires a right-hand turn only, and then entering the site would require a right-hand turn and heading west on Britton. So you can make a left into the side.
Right, and right out.
Right, and right out, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, it might be too close a radius to, to make that turn.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
When you call hauler, it's probably not going to make that turn, so. Did you guys look at that, at this closely, about turning radius and not being able to make a?
I have seen, I drive Britton frequently, I've seen many a large vehicle on Britton.
Home Depot and a lot of-
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what they do.
I think they make a wide turn.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's what I would think as well.
So as far as, as far as what they're asking for the, for the condition, what we have to condition is that they can use the parking lot as, as they're proposing here, and that we can condition how they enter and exit the parking lot. I mean, that's what I'm understanding we can do. And as long as, as long as they can, if they can make that right turn in with a big carrier, then I think that's a plausible solution. I'm, I'm not, I'm a traffic specialist, so I don't know if that's actually feasible for us to stipulate.
I mean, that's already what the existing traffic laws dictate, isn't it, or am I?
Well, I mean, they're going to have to make a wide, with a carrier, they're going to have to make a wide right turn to get in, right? And I don't know if they can do that in that, on that lane, if they're going to be, end up swinging out into another lane, so.
I mean, it might just be a situation where we condition that they follow applicable traffic laws. I don't know.
Know if the hauler is, holds what, four or six cars at a time?
No, there's many different sizes haulers.
I mean, whatever, I mean, vehicle deliveries come periodically throughout the week, if there's storing cars there, ideally, they would be able to take them directly there, unload them, and then they ferry them back and forth as needed, you know, to, to-
Could we condition that they have someone flag the, the entry in? I mean, I don't know if that's reasonable or not, but, I mean, if it's a big enough car carrier and they're trying to get in, do we need some kind of traffic monitoring or mitigation?
In, in previous use permit applications, and the one that comes to my mind is the Trader Joe's on El Camino Real, that had conditions associated with the project approval that required just that, to have traffic controllers, you know, assistant within the offloading of deliveries for Trader Joe's. So what we could do is come up with a condition, working with our Public Works and Building divisions, to address that safety issue.
Yeah, that, I'm, I was thinking Public Works had to come into this at some point. So that would be good, if we, if, if we could come up with the conditions to make it safe for through Public Works, I think they're likely comfortable with it. Jesse, what do you think?
Um, yeah.
I noticed there was a condition that there be a 24/7 guard on the property.
Yes, there will be 24/7 security, always.
Who could serve as a traffic guard, I guess, when the hauler came in. When I visited the property, I think it was Saturday, I couldn't believe it, but there was a guard there.
There are.
And I asked him if there was going to be one all night, and he said there, there would be.
So Lisa, how did you phrase that? How should we phrase that, I guess, would be the better question, that we have condition
You could possibly suggest that staff work with the building and, and Public Works and Engineering Divisions, basically Engineering and Buildings Division, to impose a, I think what you were asking for is a traffic safety plan to ensure that the car carrier can effectively maneuver into and out of the site without causing any concerns to, you know, related circulation. So we can definitely come up with a condition that does exactly that, but there's some verbiage that we would probably want to use that's typically applied to address this concern, and it's, it's used in other project applications.
The traffic safety plan, I think, is what we need to-
Okay. Traffic safety plan.
I'm fine with that.
In doing that, you'll address the right in, right out, and just, okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant?
I also noticed when I was there, there, the application says there will be all new cars. There, there was several, maybe 10, older cars parked on the edge, but you know if that'll be continued on?
I do not, I-
There's no questions? You go and have the seat, is there, I don't see anyone here from the public that wishes to speak, so I can entertain a motion to-
I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Full call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Petersen?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes. Any discussion?
No.
Then I entertain a motion.
I'll give it a shot. I move that the Planning Commission approve the request for a conditional use permit to permit outdoor vehicle storage at 1030 Britton Avenue, APNs 046-162-060 and 046-162-070, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and as conditioned in the conditional use permit, including condition number six, that staff work with Public Works, Building and Engineering Division to come up with a traffic safety plan to ensure- up with a traffic safety plan to ensure that the car carrier can move in and out of the site.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call, please.
I'm sorry, who, can I get the second?
Oh, it's Jesse.
The complainer.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda today are reports, correspondence, and general information. Do you have any reports on recent City Council actions?
No, I don't have any reports for this evening.
Okay. Planning Commission comments or reports?
I just, I'm going to have an interesting November, and I'm curious what, what planning staff has on the horizon for November 7th and November 21st.
I think we're all going to have an interesting November, actually.
Indeed. I may, I may be out for both of the November meetings, or at least remote for one of them, and so I was just curious if we have some idea of the trajectory of what's-
Sure. On the agenda for November 7th, what I have penciled in, of course, it's penciled in at this point, is staff plans to bring to the commission Phase Two of the Downtown Parking Study. As you recall, there was a Downtown Parking Study presented to the commission, I think at this point, maybe it's been at least a year or more ago. And the second part of the study is to really look at parking management strategies that the commission could recommend to the City Council. So that's on the agenda for November 7th. And it's possible that on November 21st, there could be an application for a formula business in the downtown area. We're currently working with the applicant, and if things go well according to the schedule that will work for them, we could possibly have that on the agenda for the 21st. And there will be no lot split item agendas for November. Our current schedule has the first lot split study session scheduled for October 17th, and the second one scheduled for December 5th.
Thank you.
Okay. Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Okay. Any planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
So speaking of formula business, as the Planning Commission may recall, the current formula business ordinance will expire early next year, so staff in our Economic Development Division will be back here to present to the Planning Commission on December 5th for a planning recommendation on the matter. And then, as I mentioned before, we have the upcoming lot split study session at our next regular Planning Commission hearing on October 17th. Staff is working to release the report packet to the commission on the 10th, so this will be a little bit earlier, seven days prior. We'll post it on our lot split website, and it should be available on e-packets on October the 11th.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's all I have for this evening.
Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.